Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this Lacey City Council meeting to order on July 21st, 2022. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have an agenda and consent agenda. Are any additions? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have approved the agenda and consent agenda. And first up is public comments. We receive three written public comments, and that's going to be part of our record. But we also have a couple of people signed up, showed up today. Welcome. Let's start with Janet.
Actually, we're kind of together.
Okay. Just please state your name and tell us where you're from and keep your comments about three minutes.
Okay. My name's Janet Iketa, and I've lived in the city for nearly 40 years. And recently, I sent a letter in to our mayor and our deputy mayor and a few others. I believe that there is, that the city of Lacey, the citizens of Lacey, need to have a voice in the zoning in this town. I read an article recently that you said that, that the public, because of the public disagreement with some of the proposals recently, that you probably should review the zoning. And I totally agree. I think Lacey can do so much better, and I believe that the citizens who live here and have lived here a long time should have a right to decide how that, how Lacey is going to look in the future. My idea is that zoning needs to be changed in our commercial and our business areas. I believe that mixed-use, high-density residential housing needs to be brought into our business and our commercial areas. I believe that Lacey also needs to look into bringing the light rail down this way. We need to be progressive for the future, and that's how we're going to do it. And now, that's pretty much what, the gist of my, my letter to you. Zoning has, there's an issue with zoning right now that's affecting me. And Scott and my, and Susan are here also to discuss another issue. So Scott, do you want to come up here and?
As long as this is not quasi-judicial, not something that's coming before your, okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, we're.
Oh, okay. I didn't know I was going to get solidarity here.
Can you please introduce yourself?
I'm Scott Goddard. It's been my extreme good fortune to live at 2720 Hazelwood for the past eight years. Lacey is growing rapidly. Of course it is. It's a very good place to live. Thank you, Mr. Spence, and all the City of Lacey employees, and the oversight of the City Council for making this happen. As the city grows, there are things to be considered. Some of them are small things that make the difference between the city being a good place to live and a city being a great place to live. One of the, the expansion of Watchers Park, which was described in a petition that was delivered to the City Council offices this past Tuesday, is one of those things that makes the city a great place. When we think of the Pacific Northwest of living here, the two things that come to mind are trees and water. This described expansion of Watchers Park is a celebration of trees and water. And in addition to being a celebration of the trees and water, the expansion of Watchers Park would accomplish two things. One, it would appropriately honor the gift of Miss Leslie Winters, Watchers, 15 years ago, to the citizens of the City of Lacey. It would build upon and pay homage to her generosity and her vision for this gift. Secondly, the expansion of Watchers Park would establish the legacy of this City Council of the year 2022. I have an ask. Sometime tomorrow, maybe this weekend, I'm asking each of you for 60 seconds. And in this 60 seconds, at an appropriate time, let your imagination roam and consider the city of Lacey 20 years from now, in the year 2042. It's going to be a bigger city. 250,000? I don't know. But it's going to be a big city then. And imagine, in the middle of this big city, a jewel of a city park of 25 acres of mature forests and wandering trails meandering through this forest, leading down to Hicks Lake with a view of Mount Rainier. Imagine a family walking through this park and them saying to each other, wow, can you believe that in the middle of this big city, we have this asset? How lucky are we? I wonder who made this happen? So for you, the City Council of 2022, this could be your legacy. Carpe diem.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add, Susan?
No, I just wanted to stand up here and see if you could see, and I was one of the signers on that letter.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council? And seeing none, we'll go into our next agenda item. And that is a referral from the Hearing Examiner on City Life Church. Sarah. I think she's coming on.
Hi, I'm on, and I think, hi there. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. Good evening. So before you tonight is a Hearings Examiner's recommendation related to an application received by the Community and Economic Development Department for a conditional use permit and site plan to develop a church and gymnasium on 3.57 acres of property in the mixed-use, moderate-density zoning district. This proposal is located at 4200 Sixth Avenue. It's on the north side of Sixth Avenue, across the street from North Hurston High School. The site's on a portion of property that was set aside for this church development during the plating of the Bradley Park subdivision, which council reviewed about a year ago, I believe. And along with the church and the gymnasium, a coffee shop is included within the church building that's planned to be open to the public on a daily basis. Andrew Reeves, who is the, from Sound Mall Center, who's the City of Lacey Hearings Examiner, conducted an open record public hearing on June 15th, 2022. The hearing was held both as a Zoom webinar, or was held as a Zoom webinar that allowed for public testimony via Zoom. And council chambers was also open and available for live viewing of the webinar and live participation at City Hall. All hearing notices provided information necessary for the public and any interested parties to attend the hearing. City staff and the applicant provided testimony regarding this project, as well as exhibits related to the project for the examiner's consideration. No members of the public attended the hearing either via webinar or in person at City Hall. The record before the Hearing Examiner included the Community and Economic Development staff analysis and staff report, all the application materials, technical reports and studies submitted by the applicant, comments from city staff and other public agencies that provided comment. Again, no public comment was received on this project during the application review period. And then testimony from the open record public hearing, including reports from city staff, the applicant, and their representatives. The full record is now before you, Lacey City Council, tonight. This includes the Hearings Examiner recommendation that stated June 30th of 2022. The Hearing Examiner is recommending approval of the project, and he details this recommendation in his report before you tonight. Stop's available to answer procedural questions related to the project. But first, I'm going to turn things over to City Attorney Dave Schneider to discuss some additional procedural items for you to be aware of. Thank you. Dave?
Thanks, Sarah. So Mr. Mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. Again, before you tonight is a, is a recommendation from the Hearings Examiner for a conditional use permit. So this is a quasi-judicial process where the council, in its quasi-judicial role, is going to review the Hearings Examiner's record and then make a determination based on that record. Council's going to have the ability to either approve the application, modify the application, or deny the application. By approving the application, council would simply adopt the Hearing Examiner's findings of fact and conclusions of law in a motion. To either deny or modify it, council would need to adopt findings of fact and conclusions of law which support council's decision. Council could direct me or the city manager to prepare findings and present them at a future council meeting, if that's the direction council wants to take. Given that this is a quasi-judicial hearing or matter, the appearance of fairness doctrine applies, with, upon which council needs to make sure that they're fair and unbiased in both appearance and fact. So to that end, I'm going to ask council generally, I'm going to ask council as a whole, three questions. And then if any council member chooses to have follow-up questions, or we can have a follow-up one-on-one real quickly. So, so generally, do any of the council members have any personal interests, be it financial, property, employment, family, social, any personal interests that would be affected by denying or approving the requested conditional use? Do any, have any of the council members had ex parte communication, which is off-the-record communication with either opponents or proponents of this matter while it was before council?
No.
And is there any reason why any council member cannot consider the requested conditional use application in a fair and impartial manner? Okay. Well, thank you for your time. That's it.
You have anything else to add, Sarah?
No, I'm available to answer, like I said, procedural questions if you have them. No.
Well, I guess the, the basic question here is, why would a church be under a conditional use permit?
It's not called out in the zoning code as an allowed use in the zone. And our zoning code actually, Chapter 1666, actually requires churches go through a conditional use permit unless they're in a specific zone. An open space institutional zone.
Is there any other questions from this council? Can I get a motion, please?
I would move approval of the Hearings Examiner recommendation on the City Life Church Conditional Use Permit Project Number 21-20.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Thank you, Sarah.
Right. Thank you.
So next up, under resolutions, the resolutions at the six-year tip. I think this is Martin.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. My name's Lynn Darian. I live in Sherwood Street. I, I don't understand the quasi-judicial nature of all of this. And I don't understand why a city council, elected representative, you can't listen to what, to both sides of the issue and leave things in the hands of the Hearing Examiner. I don't know how the Hearing Examiner is fit.
Yeah. So.
There is a, a kind of a sense of.
So our, our city attorney will go, will step out and talk to you and be able to answer any questions you may have. So our, our city attorney will go, will step out and talk to you and be able to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, because it's, it's very troublesome that.
Yeah, he, you can, he'll, he'll try to answer any question he has. Martin? Now to Martin. I think Martin's with us.
So Martin texted me and said he is out there, but if he's not, I can pinch-hit for him.
This is pretty straightforward with the six-year tip, so I'm sure you can take, sure you can do it, Scott.
All right, I'll do, oh, here he is.
Oh, there he is.
I was gonna have fun doing my best, Martin, but, oh, well.
I was signed in in my office, and I'm at home.
Go ahead, Martin, you're up.
Okay, hang on, let me share my screen, which I can't do. I'm sorry, I was going to pull up the summary, but I'm having issues with that.
You should be able to share your screen from the bottom of, the green button at the bottom of the Zoom window.
Okay, here. I have it up, but I can't see it.
There you go.
Sometimes it's just slow.
Getting closer.
It's me, can you see that one?
Yep. We can see the projects.
Okay, thank you, good evening. Tonight, we're here to talk about the six-year tip, just like every year. Tip is a state and federal requirement. The tip is a list of projects that we plan to start in the next six years. The main purpose of the tip is to track state and federal grants and regionally significant projects. I've always kind of thought of it as a checkbook register. All projects must be consistent with the Transportation Comprehensive Plan and the Planning Commission, both the Planning Commission and Transportation Committee reviewed it on June seventh. And no one from the public attended the public hearing. There were no new projects added this year, but we did submit a Raze grant that we expect, so I, the, and I kind of outsmarted myself on the Willamette and Campus Glen project. That was one of the contingency projects for TRPC that I didn't think we'd get again. So I made two projects, and once you obligate one of the funds, you have to keep with that STIF ID number forever until the project's complete. So I had to move that around a little bit, and so what I did there is that one is right away in construction. There was a little bit of, I guess my fault for not being clear on this, but when a project's being removed from the tip, that means the funds have been obligated and we're going into the next phase of the project. So like the electric vehicle chargers that we awarded at the last meeting for, to the contractor, go into construction. And both College Street Corridor Phase Four and the Willamette Drive and Campus Glen Roundabout is being sent to preliminary design. And then the ITS project is being set up for construction also. And that's about it, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Go ahead, Councilman.
Just a curious question, as far as the timing of these various projects. Is there, could we influence one to start before another? Like, for example, College Street Corridor Phase Four around the Twenty-Ninth Avenue and College Street. So that, that area is very dangerous. And I've talked to residents there, and there's been many accidents just in that little spot. We already have Roundabout on Twenty-Second Avenue near Mountain View Elementary School, which kind of takes care and helps alleviate traffic concerns in that part of College Street, which in, in my view, Twenty-Ninth should be more of a priority than Sixteenth Avenue. But that's just an observation.
You want to talk about how, how we fund these projects and what, what's the deciding factor, Martin?
Well, mainly, it depends on when we get the grant. And say the one on Sixteenth, I'm pretty much at, okay, stop sharing this?
Yeah, yeah, please.
I'm at a point where we're at about sixty percent design for that project. And with the new infrastructure bill that was passed, that would be the only project at Sixteenth to be able to meet the criteria for the grant. That, that's why we set it up. Since we only got the design, we were able, we were supposed to start at this, well, next year, actually. And that's why we obligated construction funding, so I got surveyors out there right now doing that. But we're going to hire, have to hire a consultant to start working on that.
So.
And if we don't get the grant, we could pick either project to go, it's just, it takes about three, four years to finish a design on one of the projects of this size.
Yeah, it always comes down to funding, and so, and there's quite a process to go through funding. There's federal funding, there's state funding, there's state grants, there's federal grants. And so we try to put it all together and see which project scores the best, so you can receive the money, so we can do the project. And so there's, so these, and that's what's always difficult when doing transportation projects, where your highest priority may not score the best, and so it doesn't get funded as soon as other projects do that. It's just the way the funding works, and it's, it, you know, doesn't always make a lot of sense. But, you know, for example, we have, we have fifty-two million on-year for the Martin Way I-five interchange improvements, and we're waiting and waiting, right? That's sort of outside our control to, to large degree, but, so. These are projects we hope to get finished in the next six years, and, and as Martin said, as soon as you obligate, you can sort of go to the next phase, and there's usually three phases of a project. So that's, that's where we're at. Is there any?
It'd be nice to influence it, though, a little more than we do.
It sure would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure would be.
I would make a motion to approve Resolution one-one-one-nine for the, for the proposed two thousand twenty-three six-year transportation improvement program, or the tip in the transportation improvement mitigation list.
Second.
Been moving second.
I forgot about that. Dave would have reminded me, but, yeah, the construction cost index for this year was seven point six percent, and the new residential cap would be two thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars per single-family household.
Okay. You understand that? Any other, any other questions?
I had one.
Okay.
Martin, when, when, when projects are on the tip and they are being planned, is there renderings and timelines available for the public? So they can know what to, to expect? And if so, where, where would they find that?
Not really. Until we get to a point where we're probably at thirty percent design, then we start having a rendering of the project. We were talking earlier this week that we, the College and Sixteenth project is pretty much ready to send to the public. We were talking about having their open house or doing it on the city's website. So that's something that we're going to start doing anyway.
Thank you.
And once it gets to, you know, to a certain place on design, you know, then we can start sharing some of that information. But a lot of this is just planning, 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 you know, and then it's, then you have to get the, sometimes you have to get right-of-way, and that takes a long time. And then the construction is usually the one that goes the quickest, it's the very last thing you got to do.
Five years of planning, and then it's construction.
Right-of-way does take a long time. The underground facilities are the biggest problem.
Is there any other questions?
Just a, I think the answer to this is probably it depends. But if, for instance, we have something in the design phase, and Martin, you just said it takes three to four years to get design finished on one of these projects, is the goal that we could then immediately start construction once design is done? Or do we have to start a whole new grant application process? So for like the Roundabout in, on College and Twenty-Ninth, is that more like six years, or is it more like three years?
Well, like the mayor said, then you get into right-of-way phase of the project. College and Twenty-Second took forever for many different reasons. But I think that was almost another five years to purchase all the right-of-way and get that approved. Luckily, back when College and Twenty-Second got funded, they would fund the entire project, so you just went to the next phase. So now we're going to have a new step where we're going to have to try to find funding for the right-of-way phase and the construction phase. They don't allow you to, or go straight to those anymore, you have to look at them individually.
So possibly longer than six years.
It would definitely be longer than six years.
Yeah, thank you.
It really, it really, really depends on the right-of-way, you know. Design, you know, takes a while, it's expensive, takes a while. The right-of-way is expensive, and it takes a long time. Construction is, you're ready to go, you've got everything, you're ducks in a row, you just got to get the funding and off you go. But the other two phases take a long, take a long time.
There's a lot of factors in the right-of-way part of it, because it all depends on who owns that property and what those negotiations look like and how long they take. That's why Twenty-Second, as I recall.
Took a long time.
I don't remember how long, but it was a long time.
Is there any other questions? Then it's been moved and seconded to pass this resolution eleven nineteen for the proposed two thousand twenty-three six-year tip and transportation improvement mitigation list. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries. Thanks, Martin.
Thank you.
So now we're on to standing general committees, the Land Use and Environment Committee.
Sleep is, I am, I just accidentally.
No problem.
Backed out of where I needed to be. There's got to be a better way to do this.
Well, then, Scott, can you, Scott has some quick announcement under city manager's report.
Yeah, just a, I'm going to put the chief a little bit on the spot. See, now he raises eyebrows up. I want to make everyone aware, just to use the, the form of the city council meeting, we do have an upcoming event, the two thousand twenty-two Cops Cars and Kids Event. It's nice to start seeing community events happen again after a long, two-year absence of that. We do really try to create a positive relationship with our law enforcement and with the community. This is just a very positive event, so you can actually engage with our law enforcement professionals. I do want to mention, too, it's an opportunity to look at our existing police station. We've been having a lot of discussions at the council level about the need to replace that. There are going to be an opportunity for tours for the public, if you want to see what our current police station looks like and why we're actually talking about the future for a replacement of that. And I know there's free popcorn and snow cones, I don't know if chief wants to add any additions to that, but we're looking forward to that event. July thirtieth, eleven to three P M.
So, yeah, very positive event. Lots of fun stuff for the kids and the families to do, it's a great chance to interact with, with police officers, and it's a really fun environment. And not just have coffee, because we have a lot of coffee with a cop-type stuff. So it'd be a fun event. As the city manager talked about, we'll have tours of our police station as it currently stands, and some visioning for the possibilities for the new police station that we've been discussing. So a really exciting opportunity to see the Statister Police Department and what it could be in the future.
Great, thank you. Hopefully, we'll see everyone out there this Saturday, next Saturday.
Two Saturdays.
Yeah, not this Saturday, the following Saturday. Now Land Use Committee.
Now Land Use, thank you. Technical difficulties here. We met on June the twenty-eighth, and we dealt with low-density zone consolidation, a preview on Carpenter Road rezone that is under consideration. On low-density zone consolidation, they're looking, we got briefed on an amendment that's one of three amendments within the comprehensive plan that will be looked at. This would combine two existing low-density residential zones into one. This does not impact the city's zoning map, only the zoning codes themselves. It will change only zoning within the city limits and will only change the map within the city limits. The urban growth area portions will be addressed as part of joint planning work with the county. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on June seventh and heard, didn't hear any testimony from the public. This will come back to us on August fourth. We also received a presentation on Carpenter rezone, Carpenter Road rezone application. This is a five-acre parcel located at four fifty-six Carpenter Road Southeast, currently zoned as low-density residential. And it is being requested to rezone into moderate-density residential. The difference being that current zoning allows for low-density allows for six units per acre, allowing for up to thirty units on this particularly parcel. If it's rezoned, it could allow for up to eighty units. This, too, I believe, will be coming to us at the August fourth meeting.
Great. Now we'll go into boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first in the transportation policy board at Bright and Early a week ago Wednesday on the thirteenth, seven A M. And we actually had a kind of a, a retreat-style meeting, because we're, we're getting right down to our, our new process for our call for projects for federal funding. And I've been, the transportation policy board's been, been working on this new call-for-projects process for, geez, quite, quite a long time. And the biggest difference is, usually as a region, what we typically tried to do was look at lane miles per jurisdiction, see how much federal dollars we were receiving, and try to say, okay, you know, Lacey has this many lane miles, which is this percentage of the overall funding available. So when you're going to do a project, try to keep it within that amount. And, and that's the way we were trying to do it for quite a long time, or when we felt like that was a good enough process. We'll come find out, the states and the federal government says, now you need to do some prioritization. You can't just base it off of a single formula. And so we started this process to look at, you know, having some performance data in there to start scoring our transportation projects. And the whole idea is, is what you're trying to do is get priority projects. You know, the best scored projects, you know, fund those priority projects. Of course, we're right down to it, and there were still several items that we weren't quite all agreeing on, and we need, we need to come together and, and figure it out. One was that the South County, it's, it's really hard to spend these federal transportation dollars. And so what the, the county has been doing for the past couple cycles has been, they set aside about six hundred thousand dollars and, and let the, the South County jurisdictions use those dollars for, for projects, and so they sort of de-federalize that money. So you take off all the, all the restrictions, and it's, it's very nice that the, the county does that, and, you know, they move that portion back on to their, their projects that they federalize, and, and they've been doing this for a couple cycles. So the question was, well, if, under these new criteria, should they be able to apply for that money? Use that six hundred thousand, apply for, you know, projects with that? And also go after the other money? And we all unanimously agreed, so nah, it needs to be one or the other. It's either you can do projects within the six hundred thousand, or you can turn that money down and go after a normal project and compete with the rest of the county. And so that, that was a pretty easy one. The, the other couple of issues were, you know, a little harder to, to agree on. One was, we, we've tried to look at our sustainable thirsting goals, and a lot of it was within our sustainable thirsting goals is talking about city centers and supporting city centers. Well, not ever, all the jurisdictions have completely defined what a city center is. Some jurisdictions have, but there's not a real uniform definition of a city center. And also, what happens if there is a roadway between two city centers? And so it kind of serves both city centers, but now it doesn't really qualify. And so the question is, do we, should we go, you know, stay hard and fast? If you haven't listed a city center, or you're out of luck, you're not going to get the points? Or should we have a little more flexibility? I, I said, well, we should, I think we should have. I, I said, well, we should, I think we should have a little more flexibility since it's not a uniform across the county. And we ended up voting that way. It wasn't unanimous, but we, we agreed with that. And then the other issue was on, on caps. Should we be capping a micro cap? So how much a jurisdiction can apply for in one funding cycle? That's called a micro cap. Or a macro cap is, should we look at it over a couple funding cycles? And, believe it or not, the, the staff recommended caps on both. I was against the micro cap because I just think it's really hard to spend these federal dollars. And if, and sometimes it may, may make more sense to do a bigger project, you know, on the construction side or some of these other sides. And if you're ready to go, you know, why break that into several different phases if you can't, you know? So I was more, I was against the micro cap, but I, it did make sense over a couple-year period, we shouldn't just have one jurisdiction, you know, taking all the federal money, you know, over time. And so we did end up agreeing with that. We, we don't have a micro cap. We did, we do have a macro cap, so. We made it through the time, I think we, we, it was, it was a good, you know, we were right down to making some final decisions. And as I talked about, you know, this is going to be an ongoing, you know, tweaking as we go through this process. We're not going to get it right, a hundred percent right the first time. And all this is doing is sort of setting the stage for trying to figure out what's a good project and not, not a good project. I think, but it, it's not going to be hard and fast. If a, one project, you know, scores really, really well, but another project that didn't score as quite as well, still has the majority of support from the Transportation Policy Board, then so, so be it. You know, we're just trying to set some guidelines out there, and we'll have to adapt as we go. The other thing we talked about, we did on, at the beginning of our meeting, was we had a couple new community reps and business reps. Over the past couple of years with COVID, we've been down both community reps and business reps. And so we went through a big application process and the good news for, for Lacey, the chair of our planning commission, applied, and he's now a business rep for the Transportation Policy Board. So that is my report. Deputy Mayor.
I do not have a report this week.
Councilmember Cox.
I have just one report. Lot and the Climate Action Steering Committee both did not have meetings in July. Regional Housing Council met on July thirteenth, and will meet again on July twenty-seventh. The bulk of the July thirteenth meeting was devoted to state funding. We had an additional three hundred and roughly fifty thousand dollars come our way for homeless services applications and decided, because it is such a laborious process to go out for funding proposals, set the criteria for those and score and award the money, and this being a relatively small amount of money, to take the list of homeless applications that we had just dealt with for twenty twenty-two and add to some of those that had received funding previously. So, for example, the Family Support Center of South Sound, which had made a funding request of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, received a hundred and seven thousand dollars. We added fifty-eight thousand dollars to bring it to their full request. And there were four of those awards. The only one that stood out that has been a little different was the Olympia Mutual Aid Partners, which is a group that has been working with the encampments along the freeway, had not been recommended for funding previously, and this time around got two hundred and seven thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars from that funding. And then we looked at applications for right-of-way and recommended to the county commissioners that for, this is hoteling, this is adding services to this. So for hoteling, two hundred thousand dollars going to Safe Place to provide support services for domestic violence victims who are sheltered in motels. And then again to OlyMAP, which is Olympia Mutual Aid Partners, a three hundred thousand dollar funding recommendation. The right-of-way project to relocate people who are living along the freeway is a fast-moving one, and as quickly as you think you have your handle, have a handle on it, something changes. But the, the state has prioritized moving people out of state right-of-way and into better living situations. And we're trying to work with them to offer shelter that's safer than living in a right-of-way, that's a meaningful improvement over living in a right-of-way, and it better addresses their individual's assessed needs. In Thurston County, they've targeted the interchanges, I-5 interchanges near Lily Road, Pacific Avenue, Slater Kenny, and then state land portions of Wheeler Street, Plum Street, Fourteenth Avenue, and Henderson in Olympia. Thurston County's is scheduled to get nineteen point six million dollars for this project, which sounds like a lot of money, but when you start talking about sheltering people, providing what they call wraparound services for them, providing the structures for people to be in, it, it goes away pretty quickly. We looked at a three-option proposal of activities, but, and the deadline for getting that list was, to the state was today. A few highlights, negotiated for up to twenty-four shelter beds at the new Unity Commons Shelter in Olympia. Outreach to support those in, who are living in the right-of-way right now for three years. This is to get them, serve them while they're there, and help them on their way out. The money for hotel stays for those fleeing domestic violence, funding to develop fifty tiny homes on the east portion of property at the Franz Anderson Road Development. Capital improvements there. And then looking at buying two hotels that would use, be used for transitional housing and gradually developed into permanent supportive housing as remodeling can take place with that funding. So the state has let Thurston County know that we're in a really better position than most counties because our jurisdictions actually work together on big regional things like homelessness, and they like that. So they've told us, yes, you know, you're tagged for nineteen point six million dollars, but don't limit your proposal to that. If you've got good stuff, send it. So we're sending it, and we'll see what that, what comes home. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Greenstein.
So I have one report tonight. Emergency Medical Services, Medic One met yesterday. Very full agenda, but I'm only going to touch on a couple of things that I think will be of interest. First, six new paramedics have been hired and have made it through the training process. They'll be starting over the next couple of weeks, which will bring the system to fully staffed, which is the first time in a very long time. So that's, that's a really big deal. We approved budget amendments for twenty twenty-three because they have to go in front of the county commission here in the next month or so. It's about a million dollars, just under a million dollars, and it was approved unanimously. And I want to update you a little bit on the ninety-day ambulance transport trial. So you've heard me talk a little bit about this in the past. The idea behind this is, current system is when Medic One or when rescue is dispatched, so is BLS ambulance, basic life support, which is the private ambulance service, Olympic Ambulance, AMR, private companies that are dispatched at the same time. The problem that's causing is twofold. One, they're being deployed in a lot of cases where they're not actually transporting someone, which is a serious problem for them and their business model because they only get paid as private companies when they actually transport someone. And secondly, it makes, takes them out of service when they may be needed for another call, and there just aren't enough ambulances. So the, the trial, the ninety-day trial is going to be that they don't dispatch automatically when fire, rescue, or Medic One are dispatched. Instead, the decision will be made at the scene of whether they're needed, and then they'll be called for. So it'll be a slightly slower process to get them there, but again, paramedics are already there, so if it was a life-threatening situation, the people you need are already there. This is basic life support, not people that are critical. The two exceptions even during the trial will be motor vehicle accidents. So motor vehicle accidents, they will still be dispatched on because there is a huge time factor there. We need to get those cleared so that traffic can move again and that kind of thing. And the second one would be stroke calls, stroke and heart attack calls, because again, timing is critical. We have a very good stroke process in this county and have saved countless lives because of it, but timing is everything, so those calls, they will still be automatically dispatched. So anyway, that, that's going to start, that'll run for ninety days, and we'll get the numbers and see how it works, and make some decisions after that. They'll evaluate it every thirty days as it goes, and I'll keep you informed as there's more information. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been interesting to hear this process, and I'm, I'm pretty sure at the end of this ninety days, Olympia and the, what will be the new regional fire authority is going to take this over themselves. So.
They're two separate things, but I would wholeheartedly agree that what Olympia is doing and them putting AMR on notice, they, they have every intention of moving forward and doing their own transport. There's, there's no question about that.
Sure. Every indication we've received is that they're going to go forward with that, so. Anyway, okay. Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one report. Thurston County Law and Justice met today right before this meeting, so I was here a little bit earlier, so I didn't have to have any travel time involved. Three takeaways. One was Thurston County Resource Hub. It's much like the Veterans Hub here in Lacey, only it's for people with mental health issues that are impacted by the justice system. They indicated the top three needs continue to be housing, of course, you know, the housing crisis in, in our region. And then actually getting people assessed for, for their mental health. And then just basic, basic needs like toiletries and, they even listed cellphone. You know, a lot of people these days take communication for granted because they, everybody has a cellphone. Well, you don't when you don't have any money and, and mental health impacts your status of, you know, whether you're employed and stuff like that. So that was one thing. The, the, the two other things are regards to the sheriff's office and cameras being installed in the, in the patrol vehicles and body cameras. So by, the sheriff gave update saying by year's end, they should have all the process done and, and those be, being activated. And our very own Chief Almada gave a, a brief, too, and I mean, I could put him on the spot to tell him what, tell the citizens what our.
Yeah.
Situation is with our body cameras and stuff, but that's only.
Sure. What's our, what time of time, since you're bringing it up? I know we've talked about it.
So, yeah, the council's been very generous in funding the Body Ward Camera Program and in-car camera program. We have gone through three different vendors, looking at who's the best choice. We've selected the primary vendor that we're looking to go with. We've delivered a five-year proposal to go with that vendor. The city managers reviewed it, brought back some suggestions on it. We're working with the vendor on that right now. We hope to have the Body Ward portion implemented by end of the year. In-car camera will be next year due to supply chain problems, unfortunately, as we've discussed. But moving forward in that direction, definitely.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that update.
Thanks, Chief. And then, you know, much like our mobile, mobile outreach team here in, in Lacey, the county has hired four or five people, I believe it was, Chief. And again, they're looking at the end of August to implement that, so. And they'll be in communications with all the jurisdictions to include Lacey and so, and get, you know, the, like Chief said during the meeting, and he said way better than me, but it's, you know, having our police officers relate, you know, respond to police matters and not, you know, and taking them away from their, their job, because they're called on so many times to do stuff that's not related to their, their job because there's just no one else there. And so the more we get people online to get people the proper help and the, and the better resource, the better. I don't know if you want to explain it any better or not, Chief, but.
Again, I want to commend the council on funding this initiative. Working with Olympic Health and Recovery Systems, we've been able to develop our mobile outreach team, or MOT. Currently, we have four members, two clinicians, two peer counselors that provide seven-day coverage by eight to ten hours per day with overlaps on Wednesday. The county's copied our, our plan. It's been a very effective model and helped a lot of folks. And our program is growing, should add one DCR next year, by the way, at no cost. Will be embedded with our, our team as well. The benefit of having an embedded DCR is we have that relationship then. So if they put a involuntary hold on somebody, we have that relationship. We know what their standards and criteria are, so it makes it much easier to work professionally with them. But really, the benefit of having the mobile outreach team is able to have them be dispatched to non-law enforcement events where folks in crisis or an officer on scene, if someone in crisis can draw them to the scene. So really, it's a great, great model that we're using very effectively here.
I, I believe it was the city manager who drafted the infrastructure for the mobile outreach team. Was that your deal, Scott?
I can take credit for it. That's been a, a national model. I want to say Florida was kind of a leader in that, but it, the idea, again, is to make sure, make sure we have mental health professionals in the field dealing with these issues and freeing up our police officers' time and actually working in a collaborative environment, so. But again, I, I also acknowledge Chief for, you know, working relationship with Olympia Health and Behavior, and, and it's been a good model, very successful model. I think we've seen a lot of success.
Absolutely.
I'll rephrase. I think it was Scott who brought us the infrastructure.
And, and so it's, it's just, you know, you always hear me, you know, whether it's a transportation improvement thing or, or law enforcement, or, you know, the Lacey Veterans Hub, you know, Lacey, I believe, does a great job when they take the lead in things, and the other, the neighbors take notice, and they, they follow suit in a lot of ways because it makes sense. And that's why I'm always pushing for Lacey to be the lead, because number one, we main, you know, we streamline it and we work most of the bugs out, and it's, you know, it's a refined process by the, by the end, and it works very effectively, no matter what it is, transportation, mental health, you name it. Lacey, I believe, does it the best. And what it all really boils down to is the best model at the end of the day, whatever service you're trying to provide. And so that, that was the update, and then I just wanted to report on that because it's like, again, Lacey does the best, I believe, and so the end result is all that matters.
Thank you. You have a question, Councilmember?
Just a quick clarification. DCR, direct care responder?
Disney Care Responder.
Oh, so close. All right. For me and also for the folks at home. Thank you.
Any of you report? Councilmember Kunkel.
I have no report.
Councilmember Vasquez.
You're so fast. I only have one report tonight. The Olympic Clean, Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority canceled their meeting, so we didn't meet last week. And the Thurston Regional TRPC is not until next month. Sorry, long day. But I wanted to share briefly, we met for the Inter-City Transit Authority yesterday, and also a pretty full agenda. I'll just hit the highlights. One thing we heard was good news that Congresswoman Strickland reported that the appropriations bill had passed the House, which currently, in its current form, includes one point eight million dollars to come to intercity transit to support our zero fare bus stop accessibility improvements. So good news for us, but it still has to go to the Senate, so stay tuned for more updates. They reported that COVID cases are down for their drivers, which is good. They had more than forty cases, confirmed cases of COVID in June. That's a substantial number of their drivers proportionally, so this year, or this month, they're going in the right direction. There are fewer cases reported, but they're only at about eighty percent service levels because they have vacancies and folks out with COVID, so we can't get quite up to the level of service we want to provide with our buses around the county. They did a presentation of the new CAD AVL system, which is Computer-Assisted Dispatch and Automatic Vehicle Location System. Very detailed presentation, but what it boils down to is just a better, more modern system that gives point-in-time, minute-by-minute updates on where the buses are, what challenges they're facing, what traffic looks like. It's better for the folks using the system on the staff side, whether they're drivers or dispatchers. or dispatchers, and it's going to mean better service for customers, too, because it will report out on where the buses are in real time for any of the applications where people will find buses to get on or figure out how they can get from one place to another. So that's good news. There's a revisement to the contract for the improvements to the Martin Way Park and Ride. So no exciting news, just they are putting a little bit more money toward that, but the project to improve the Martin Way Park and Ride proceeds. And we had a presentation from Karen Parkhurst from the Thurston Regional Planning Council seeking feedback on the Coordinated Human Services Transportation Plan. So all the jurisdictions work together to try to figure out what we need to improve transportation access for everybody in the county. Feel free to go online and check it out, provide feedback. They're looking for the things that are important to people in Lacey and the rest of our community for how people get around, whether it's sidewalks, access to buses, you know, other accessibility for folks with mobility-related disabilities, all that stuff. So check out the website, TRPC, you can provide feedback. And we had a quick public hearing on the Vanpool Program because the state passed a requirement that allows for grant funding if local transportation authorities provide free access to Vanpool for folks under the age of 18. We already did that. We were ahead of the curve, but we had to update the rules just to recognize that we were already in compliance so that we could access grant funding. So done. That's my report.
I was, I was curious. I think, I think, I'm not sure where I asked this question, but, you know, with the way the fuel prices are right now, historically, when fuel prices go up, you see ridership go way up. Has, has there been a same correlation during this time, where, have you gotten any information on that?
I think part of what may be influencing a lack of sort of an increase in ridership is just that we can't provide services at the level we'd like because we don't have all the buses online because of the driver shortages related to COVID and just getting people hired. And they're hiring people as fast as they can, but it's barely enough to keep up with retirement. I don't have the numbers on ridership, but I could get them.
Okay. Real quick, intercity transit right now is a zero fare ride for this county for the next three years, is it? I, I remember it was a five-year.
I don't remember the timeline, but.
Was it a five-year? I don't think you're here yet, but I think it's a five-year, and we've made it through almost two of those years, if I remember right.
Yeah. I think the intention is to keep it this way. We want buses to be accessible. It's just better transportation policy.
And you'll still have the, the issue of expense to have to pay for it and add that to the, to each vehicle, too? Okay. Well, we've reached the end of our agenda. Just looking at the weather for next week, it's supposed to be in the 90s. That means like we don't do anything that gets above 90 in the Pacific Northwest, so I hope everyone can stay cool. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey. Without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned.